All right, good afternoon and welcome to the meeting of the Curriculum and Instruction Committee. We're here at the National High School North Boardroom. It is Monday, March 18th, of 4:02. I'll take the role. Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Ms. Prin? Not here. Ms. Daniels-Williams?
Here.
And with us this afternoon, we have Dr. Sarpity, Assistant Superintendent Sarpity, and Assistant Superintendent Poska. And I'll let Dr. Sarpity introduce our many guests tonight, or this afternoon.
Great, thank you. So first, we have a presentation, or we have a discussion, I guess we'll say, by a brand-new educator, Ms. Mrs. Maureen Pat, who's been here for a short 31 years in the district. And tonight, she's going to be talking about the Hockman Method. And essentially, we as a district have been looking for ways to make sure that we are incorporating writing in our district to deepen content knowledge, to help refine our students' writing craft, and then also to demonstrate reading comprehension. And so this amazing book that we encountered, The Writing Revolution, is something, it's a resource that was shared with many of our teachers. And Mrs. Pat has really just kind of taken off with it. So she's going to talk about what she's been doing in her classroom, and then she's going to show us some writing.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Maureen. I'm speaking today from my own experience with The Writing Revolution. Please know that I'm aware that I've had extensive training and time to implement it successfully. I hope that speaking with you today might put others' minds at ease that there is a way to write all day without it being a new curriculum. Last winter, our reading specialist, Jennifer Goslin, shared that she had some training in The Writing Revolution. She was excited about it, thought it would be a good fit for our school, and began a book study. I was one of many who took part. We ended up loving it so much, we asked to take the official 10-hour training with The Writing Revolution Company. Throughout the book study and all of the workshops, we jumped right in with both feet and began trying some of the strategies with our students. Because of this, we were truly ready this past fall to roll out the method and begin writing within all content areas. I have created a packet for you with a progression of my students' writing from the fall until now. You'll be able to see that we started at the sentence level, then worked our way up to a paragraph, and then multi-paragraphs. The examples also show a gradual release from guided teaching to guided practice to partial release, and then independent work. The most positive change I've seen this year is that my students love writing. We write all day, so there isn't a writing block. My reluctant writers don't give out a collective groan because they don't announce that it's writing time. It's a fluid process that ebbs and flows with our content. With TWR, students don't struggle with what to write. Through explicit teaching and practice, the method becomes ingrained, and they are always able to apply the current content to their writing. Our third graders took the SAS writing test last week. Having been exposed to TWR all year, they were absolutely ready to show off their skills. They were able to create their own graphic organizers, type their drafts, and revise them in a 90-minute block. For the first time in my SAS history, I did not have one single student who didn't know what to do or how to tackle the assignment. Their pride in their work is the most fulfilling part of my job right now. Thank you.
You want to talk a little bit about what we're seeing in terms of their progression right now?
Sure. So this was the fall, this was the pre, so the early September benchmark we did for sentences. And they actually did quite well because our second-grade team also jumped on board last spring. So the second graders that came to me as third graders this year already had a jumpstart on sentence level. So there's several examples of, you know, continuing sentences, writing them in the correct order, expanding sentences.
Can you talk a little bit about this method right here?
This is called kernel sentences, which I always forget and call nuggets, which my kids think is funny. So you give them a sentence, I think it's a little bit above, where it says "when" in winter. Roll up. There we go. So the kernel sentence was "snowflakes fall", which is the way typical second or third graders write. So we talked about expanding that with when, where, how information. Well, where was it snowing? Where, when was it snowing? How, what was going on? And then you see, they wrote the expanded sentence, including "snowflakes fall", but with so much more information about it. So it became "in winter, in the North Pole, there was a blizzard", so all the gifts got sucked up and had to, they had to make new ones. So it's not Santa. Yep. So then, it's all based on the SPOs, the single-paragraph outline, which we worked our way up to, but that's on the next page. Shows you just the graphic organizer we used all year is right there. But they had to learn to make that themselves in the last month for SAS because we couldn't give them that. So they were able to, with lined paper, they wrote TS and the four details in the CS, and were able to take notes for the SAS.
And can you tell us, for some people who might not know, what does TS stand for?
Topic Sentence and Concluding Sentence. And 1 through 4 with the dashed lines are just for notes. So they jot quick notes for details that later become sentences. And then I wrote at the top, generated as a class, because September, October, we did a lot of that, where I had the SPO under my document camera, and after we did some sci, this was science, or after we read something in language arts, they would generate the ideas, but I would do the writing, and I'd be talking to them about it. So then they took it, and you can see, they used my written notes to do their paragraph, which comes up next, I believe.
Right. So, one of the, one of the concern, not concerns, but one of the challenges that I've heard since I came into this district is that there are not, there's not a lot of time for students to be able to write. And students don't have the ability, or not ability, but don't have the opportunity to take the content that they're learning, and, so this is related to science, and really expand, again, to demonstrate both reading comprehension and then also to deepen content knowledge. So I actually, I believe that I saw this, right, I kind of saw this in process. So this is a third-grade class. Can you just read a little bit of this for us?
We all have a genetic code that gives our bodies instructions. Did you know that there are tiny cells in your body? And in those cells, there's a lot of genes in your cells. Cells are very, very tiny, so that means genes are even smaller. You need a microscope to see them, also "did you know?", and so on and so forth. Which I spoke to my college freshman daughter about what my third graders were writing about, and she couldn't believe it.
And what, like, just to go down a little bit more, it talks a lot about inherited traits?
Yes.
And how you get your traits from your mother and from your father. And I can tell you that my son is in 10th grade right now, and he is learning all about this stuff. Want to share about this?
Continue. So this is more science, just showing you how we incorporate it into science several times a week. CKLA, yep. And then this is one of the CKLA workbooks that shows you, you know, the directions where, mark the topic sentence, mark the concluding sentence, mark the details, that's TWR. So they already knew how to do that. So several of the workbook pages that go hand in hand. And again, putting them in order. And then they're given topics, and they had to write the topic sentence. So we try it in so many different ways. This was some fiction that we were able to do. The writing about.
Have you ever seen children write this volume of text and then also be able to incorporate this many ideas within their writing in third grade?
No, we would be lucky, you know, every year to have one or two or three who were at this level.
So I can tell you, just from observing Maureen's classroom, when I, when I came in the last time, so, you know, you have, I guess, a diverse class, right? We have students who are in project achievement. We have students who are multilingual learners and different levels of English proficiency, is that right? And so when the students were working on their writing, the first thing I noticed, because they'd been doing this since they came into school in August, is that there were very little scaffolds and supports in place. But in the places where we saw some scaffolds and support, they, they were minimal. And that tells me that, you know, obviously you have to build up, you have to work up to this, right? You don't start writing like this in August. But the one thing that I want to point out is that the content that was being written about, the content that you all talked about previously, it was grade-level content. There was nothing that was lowered in terms of rigor, or, like, the text wasn't lowered, the vocabulary wasn't lowered. There were some scaffolds up to help with access, but the work that students were producing was expected to be the same. The expectations never, never changed. So if you were to go into Maureen's class, you would have no idea which students receive specialized instruction or which students are not proficient at English yet because, because of these structures that she's putting in place. So that's something that I wanted to highlight. Want to say anything else about that?
I don't think so. What, just scroll down and see what's at the end? I will say, I have several beginning ELL students who all wrote a sentence or two or three on the SAS because they looked for important words. They couldn't read the articles, but they found important vocabulary words, which we've been practicing all year, and they were able to put it together to say something. And they were so proud of themselves.
So this right here is a six-paragraph essay that students had to, had to produce. And this is related to CKLA and the knowledge domain. Can you talk a little bit about this?
Yes. So the end of Unit 2, which was Classifying Living Things, they had to write a, I think it just said an essay about an animal from one of the animal groups. And so I let them pick their animal, and I decided, we'd been doing the SPOs all year, why not use six of them to put them together? And so that's what we did. Each paragraph had its own SPO. It was guided as a class to start about what each SPO would be about, such as, you know, we'll talk about their animal group, we'll talk about whether they're vertebrates or invertebrates, we'll talk about whether they're warm-blooded or cold-blooded, but take it from there and do your notes. And so that was a final copy there.
Great. I have one last question for you. Can you talk a little bit about how you also integrate this into your math block?
It's more the sentence level in math, and in fact, we were doing it today. Lots of story problems where they say, "explain how you know", or "do you agree, why or why not?". And they were struggling with answering that. And I said, "Well, wait a minute. If we say it the way we say a topic sentence or a concluding sentence, that makes it easy." And boom, it clicked for them, and they were able to, they were even saying in math, "As you can see, you know, a rectangle is a quadrilateral because it has four sides." So just really tying them all together, the language makes sense to them.
Ms. Gilio?
Hi. So this is for all grades? Do they begin in kindergarten or first grade or?
That's our goal, and yes, they are working at it. They didn't have the training that we had last year. It is the goal for our whole school to be using it. Definitely, 2nd and 3rd grade are fully on board and got going first.
Okay.
And I know the other grades up and down, above and below us, are working on integrating it as well.
Thank you. So I just wanted to also plug, I know that I've talked a lot about the knowledge gap written by Natalie Wexler. And Natalie Wexler's work really had to do with helping us to identify, and this is something that goes way beyond her, with the fact that a lot of children struggle with reading comprehension because they don't have background knowledge and vocabulary. If we are able to decode words and associate sounds with letters and then groups of letters and put it all together, and we can see words, that's great. But if we don't actually have the background knowledge and the vocabulary, then it makes it impossible to be able to both decode, look at the words, and then make sense of all of the words and kind of put it together. So this definitely ties in because Natalie Wexler is also one of the co-authors of this book. And some of our educators had the opportunity, I believe, over the summer to actually see her present and talk a little bit about this work. But there's nothing, I mean, this is all aligned to research. There's nothing that is profound or groundbreaking. It's really just going back to the sentence level and doing all of the things that we used to do, but I think we just kind of got away from it. I'm sorry. So is this a pilot or is it being done at all the schools right now? So it's not a pilot, it's not a writing program. It's, it's, these are just best practices. It's instructional strategies that, that teachers have been using forever, and they're just kind of packaged up into one great book, where we can say, "Hey, wait a second. Something as small as just using three conjunctions can help us to expand our writing, or for us to be able to go back and really look at, examine syntax, so we can understand what an author is trying to communicate to us, and then we also replicate those skills. It's just about refining our writing." And like I said, not, it's not a program, it's not a pilot, it's not anything. It's just good practice. So do, so you mentioned a 10-hour training.
Yes.
Is that available to all of our teachers? Or are the teachers teaching the teachers? And how is this being spread out? Yeah, so we've been, so started out, you know, kind of sharing the resource and trying to get people interested. And that interest, I think, is growing. Particularly at Broad Street, the reading specialist, the reading, yeah, Jennifer Goslin over there, she really took to this and started using some of the strategies with her students that she was serving. And then it just kind of blew up. But does everybody have access? Absolutely. And if more people want to know more about The Writing Revolution, that's why we're here. We want to be able to showcase, again, that it's not one more thing. It's something that you can just embed in what you're doing every single day. And I also will just go further to say that the research absolutely does not support a separate block of writing. It's not how reading and writing work. And so we want to always make sure that we have text at the center of everything we do, and that is, that is part of this process. Thank you.
Ms. Daniels-Williams?
You had mentioned how this sits in conjunction with the CKLA. So can you just tell us a little bit more about that? How this isn't a curriculum, but that's a curriculum, and how it sits together?
Well, okay, so this isn't a curriculum, this is just best practice. These are just things that teachers do. And really, this is, this is kind of where the practices came from. They came from teachers who were very knowledgeable about the research and how to employ that research to help, again, expand reading comprehension, deepen content knowledge, and help students refine their writing craft. But you can use this with CKLA, you can use this with Eureka Squared, you can use it with Amplify Science. It's, again, it's just good practice. CKLA is a, it is a curriculum because the curriculum is designed to systematically and coherently build content knowledge. And there is like a scope and sequence. And there, from year to year, there also is a vertical alignment. So we start off building some content knowledge, and the next year, we build onto that content knowledge. That's very systematic. And, and this is a little bit different. This is something that we could use with anything it is that we do. So I'll give you one example. I sometimes tutor police recruits who are in the middle of field training, who may be multilingual learners who are having a little bit difficult, a little bit of difficulty communicating events, like chronological events that happened when they went on a call, and then sort of taking that information and then conveying it in a written report. So I actually use these types of practices to work with police recruits to be able to help them effectively and efficiently write a police report. It's, it's just good practice. Thank you so much.
Appreciate you.
All right, so next up, we are going to talk about Lexia Core 5. We do have Lexia Core 5 friends here. But before we hear from the Lexia folks, we're going to actually hear from our teachers and our, one of our administrators. So we're going to start with Sandy Smith, who is the reading special, one of the reading specialists at Birch Hill. And then we have Julie and Anna, and they are teachers at Dr. Crisp. And then we have Maria, who is the AP at Dr. Crisp. So we'll start off with Sandy. Sandy's going to talk a little bit about Lexia Core 5. They were one of, I guess, our pilot schools, really. And then go from there. Sound good?
Good afternoon. So as Dr. Sarpity was saying, we, at Birch Hill, we actually started using Lexia Core 5 at the very beginning of the school year. Actually, on the very first day that all the teachers arrived in August of 2022, unbeknownst to me and to my reading partner, reading specialist partner, Nadine DeRozier, there was a meeting scheduled with a Lexia consultant that morning. And so we had a wonderful meeting, and both of us had previously either had heard of Lexia and a lot of positive remarks, or had had a positive experience using it. And so we were very excited to have this brought to our school. Our administration was, was very appreciative and excited about it as well, and offered us multiple opportunities to present to the staff and then offer professional development after we had it from listening to some of our consulting meetings. And so it was quite successful. Everybody in the school had used it with fidelity, and the talk was nonstop about how excited the kids were. And when they reached a certain level, it was celebrated, and certificates were printed out. And it was wonderful because everybody was learning at their own pace and their own level. So it's an adaptive program, and the students place where they need to be. And then those skills are embedded into the program. And the way that we use it as reading specialists is that we get a pulse in the whole school. So we get to look at the SPOY data, we look at the grade-level data, and then, of course, we look at student trends. And we are able to support the school with professional development that is very targeted and specific. We also look at the data with our team. So we go to the professional learning communities, and we look at the data and talk about specific kids, and we look at other data as well. But we bring up the Lexia data because it's so pointed and so specific. We are able to then help support teachers, kind of guide them a little bit more about what those, what the results from Lexia really mean, and help them interpret it a little bit to, again, support them with the science of reading and understand the research behind it and how these different approaches or different strategies can help close those gaps. So Lexia will give some direct instruction and guided practice along the way when a student is, is working in Lexia. And so we then are able to sit with the teacher and look, look and see, "Well, this student really spent and extended a amount of time in a certain area. What does that mean? What can we do about that?" So again, it's really about giving those individual students those, those specific needs. And then they're able to look at resources to target those skills in small groups, or maybe one-on-one, or even in a call-up situation where he might come see me or the other reading specialist for intervention. So again, you know, we had an incredibly successful year. We actually did a celebration of Pancake Purdy for the staff, actually, at the end of the year to really celebrate the success. So we were very excited to hear that it was coming back this year. And we've also seen, again, great success with, with it. The students really enjoy it and ask for it. They really do treasure that time. And like I said, it's very informative, not only in the PLCs, but if there is a, what we call a chat meeting where we come together, a team of, of teachers and the administration, and we talk about a certain student that might be struggling in literacy. And again, we look at all points of data, but Lexia data, again, is part of that cohesive picture. And in closing, just to give you a little statistics, this year, we started with 79% of students, this is school-wide, 79% of students working below the grade-level material. Currently, we have 51%, which is a 40% increase. Working in grade-level materials at the start of the school, here, we had 20%, and we currently have 39% working in grade-level materials, which is a 19% increase. And we started the school year with students working above the grade level, or 1% of the students working at grade level, and now we have 10%, which is a 9% increase. So we have really benefited as a school. Obviously, the students have benefited, and that's the most important part, right? But us as a, as a learning community have benefited as well because it's another tool to use, and it's very pointed and specific. And we are hoping that it stays. Thank you.
I'm Julie Pester, I'm a 4th-grade teacher at Dr. Crisp. Thank you for having me here today. I just wanted to touch base about, a little bit about what Lexia looks like in my classroom. Currently, my students have access, are on the Chromebooks for Lexia for a 45-minute block. During this time is also when small groups are happening for reading. So at any time, I can have three small-group instructions happening in my classroom. And so the remaining students are on Lexia. Similar to what she said, my students enjoy Lexia, they ask to be on Lexia. They are able to make connections to what we are learning. We just finished a poetry unit, and one of my students was working on lines and rhymes. And he, he was like, "Oh, we just did that." So I was like, "Yep, it's just what we've been doing in class, just on your computer." I love it as a teacher because it's very individualized for the student. So I have some students who are below grade level, and it's right where they need to be. And then I have those other students who are working above grade level, and it continues to push them. So for my classroom, some more data. 100% of my students started below grade level. As of today, 47% are still below grade level. However, 32% are on grade level, and 21% are above grade level. I actually had one student finish the program, and then there's a middle-school level, so that he was moved to the middle-school level. And then as a school, we started at 89% below grade level, and we're currently at 58% below grade level, so making increases. And then, in my classroom, I'm competitive by nature. So my kids are competitive, and so I can say, you know, "He's, he got 25 units last week", and I'll have another student say, "That's not going to happen this week, I'm going to beat him." And so that, you know, it's, if they want to do a compete, but it's like tricking them into reading, so it's great.
Hi, my name is Anna McKay, I'm a 2nd-grade teacher. I'm going to touch on Lexia more on the formative assessment side and how it can be used as a data point amongst others as the other tests. But the program has an interface that teachers can use and administrators can use as well that allows us to see the specific content areas that they're, they're having great success with or they might need some help with, as well as more general areas of confusion. It's been a great help within the PLC setting to be able to do a deep dive on a student and see where we can assist them, and if it's something about focus, or maybe it's just a big confusion that we can support them in a small group with instead. An example of this is we, last year, because we had utilized it last year at Dr. Crisp as well, we were asked to bring a student in mind and talk about them as a team. And during this time, a colleague brought up that there was a concern that a student hadn't made the growth that they should have or could have at that time. And through the data that we collected, Lexia collects, we figured out that it was through any questions with listening prompts was something that was a real challenge for the student. So it really targeted an area of concern. So the teacher was then able to make informed decisions on how to best support the student, both in Lexia and in the classroom. Additionally, I use it to help create small groups. So recently, we're working on R-controlled vowels in 2nd grade. So we've been able to use it to, in conjunction with M-class. So we've been able to use it to um in conjunction with M-class and it's just a great other data point to make sure that all students are being met exactly where they need to be. We can support them across the board.
And then just at Dr. Crisp, so we use it to help, excuse me, help celebrate the students. Um, so when you finish a level on Lexia, you get a certificate. Um, almost every teacher at Dr. Crisp prints those certificates and hangs them. Um, I have a bulletin board in my classroom. Anna hangs hers outside of her classroom. In my classroom, I've had ninety certificates this year, so ninety levels collectively between my, my twenty-one students. Um, and then as a school, seven-hundred-and-sixty-three certificates have been um given out. So it's, they enjoy seeing their success. Uh, I have a student who goes and counts his certificates all the time, like, you still have eight, like, you're still doing a good job. Um, and then our reading specialist sends a weekly email with the top Lexia um users. So again, competitive in my classroom. I'll hit them with, oh, Mrs. Norway's class had more than us, and they're like, that's not gonna happen again. So um they really enjoy it.
Finally, something that I've really enjoyed is I, we're working on growth mindset in second grade and we still will have students say, but I can't read, I can't read yet. Um, and I found that this is something that really helps them feel successful within literacy. They see themselves gaining, they see the units as well as the levels. Um, so it really just provides a checkpoint for them to feel success within reading, and it's been a great benefit.
I do. Um, I just have a question on the data. Is that just since the beginning of the school? The data that the two of you shared about, you know, starting with a hundred percent, we're not even in, and so that's just since the fall.
Correct, correct.
That's impressive. Thank you.
So as you can see, um, we're, at Dr. Crisp, we've been using Lexia. Um, I can say that our classrooms are doing a wonderful job of using it, especially during wind time. It's a great resource for teachers to take the data that they're seeing with their students and being able to formulate um groups. So for instance, you know, as Anna was sharing, she's able to work with students on R-controlled vowels. She's seeing how they are doing on it in Lexia and says, okay, this, this group might need a little bit more attention on this. Perhaps she has a group that's, you know, working on vowel teams and she can poll that group as well. We've been supported all year long um in Lexia with um our representative, David Charla, who's sitting in the audience. So he has met with us, um, I've met with him probably at least a good three or four times this year to review data. And then we've also met with our PLC groups. He's come, he's zoomed in with us during PLCs to look over our data, to think about um ways to incorporate Lexia into the classroom, ways that we can continue to um show growth amongst our students. Um, he has shared with us some really exciting data um for our school. Um, our school usage has increased significantly since we started using um Lexia. So for instance, um, so at least fifty-five percent of our students are working at or above grade level material now. We've had students who have started as um Julie and Anna talked about, students who came into the school starting below grade level. Um, so for instance, we've had at the beginning, fifty percent of our students were working two grades below, whereas now, in March, only eighteen percent are two grades below. At the start, thirty-eight percent of our students were working one grade below where they should be. Now that's down to twenty-four percent. In the fall, eleven percent of our students were working at their grade level on Lexia. Now forty-six percent of our students are working on grade level. Um, at the start of the year, we did not have any students in Lexia working above grade level. We now have twelve percent working above grade level. Um, another interesting point we talked about is where, we kinda like looked more deeply into that, you know, how these students have grown. Um, so I'm gonna share with you just some exciting data. So for instance, we had um a group of students who, when they started, were three um grade levels below. We have a student in our school who has not only achieved the three additional years, but is actually going above. So the student started off in fourth grade, was three years below, has caught up to fourth grade material and is even working a bit above fourth grade. So it's, it's just proving to us how beneficial this program has been for our teachers and incorporating it with the data that we're, we have, you know, through our M-class. Um, it's, it really merges and ties in nicely, um, you know, with the science of reading of, of encouraging, you know, of working with students so that they can learn to read, so that as they move on up into third and above, that they are able to read, to learn, and to learn that is important content that is so needed for reading and writing.
I just, can I just add one thing? So I love how humble these guys are, but I just wanna highlight, Dr. Crisp is working really, really hard. We have, I, we, again, we have our assistant principal here, we have our principal in the audience, we have her biggest fan, her daughter, and then we have the reading specialist. Everybody at that school is working really, really hard to turn the data around. So a hundred percent, we know that Lexia is an amazing resource, but additionally, we also know that there are lots of factors that are contributing to all of this growth that we're seeing. And it is because, one, we have an amazing reading specialist over here who is showing folks what data to look at, how to, how to use that data and how to really make sure that they are assessing to the point of breakdown. They figure out where the breakdown is and that's where they laser focus their, their intervention efforts. So there's just such good work happening there. And I just wanted to make sure that I highlight that because I think, you know, for a long time, Dr. Crisp has gotten a bad rap and these guys are working overtime to turn that around. So I just wanted to highlight that. Um, and then I don't know if there are any questions and I will also bring our Lexia folks over here.
I just, um, um, so some of the students are actually working with this on their Chromebooks and others are in small groups working with the teacher? That kind of what it looks like in the classroom?
So typically, Lexia, it's an online program. So they are working online while working on Lexia. But the great thing about it is that it has an interface where you can download um lessons and other things and work with the program while they're online. So you can pull a small group based on the data that we've received from their independent work.
Can do that by the level that they're at?
Yes, yeah, and also by specific concept as well. So if they're, if it is R-controlled vowels, they will get a lesson very particular to that misconception.
Okay, thank you.
Dawn? I'm Leah Klein from Lexia.
Uh, David Charla from Lexia as well.
We're, we're here to provide um some background information on Lexia and also thank you all for sharing. That was very rewarding to hear, so. But it's helpful to get a little bit of background around how did Lexia come about? And it actually started with a father who had a child with dyslexia. Um, we have been, that was the inception point. And we have been, um, we have now celebrating our four-year anniversary. It was the result of his application for a grant for the National Institute. So we are an organization that was built on the premise of gathering research. I'm going to see that um as I move through this. So here is one of the cornerstones of Lexia and that is really contributing to the body of the science of reading. So as we know, science of reading is a body of research that is growing. And we have twenty-six peer-reviewed studies um that illustrates the research base and the efficacy of our programs. When we think about that, when we review these studies, you'll see that they are thinking through all the kinds of populations that we care about in the school system. So that's also part of it. It's also, you see here, computers in education as well. So thinking about what, you know, how our technology is used and who it's with to really draw on the efficacy of that. Um, I pulled two specific studies that I thought were relevant. Um, we know that our students with disabilities have difficult time learning to read and then that can have a great impact on their success in life. And that is so important that we find a way to reach those students. So this particular study zones right in on students with disabilities. Um, as you see here, they're highlighted as specific learning disability, speech and language or developmental delay. This is a ve- very powerful um outcome to this study. Um, it, it, we know that the um, this illustrates, if you look at the effect size, this effect size is almost two times more than what is known to be effective. So um, we know that to be effective, it's some, it's along the lines of one-point-three. This is showing almost two times the level of effectiveness with the students that were um studied in this program. It was a randomized control study and as you see here, it, it did um receive an S of strong rating. SS ratings are, allow us to see the effectiveness of how something is studied so that we know when we see that data, it's valid. This was another study that was actually done with a significant number of students, so over twelve thousand students, just as a point of comparison. Why I also chose this one as well is because it really centers around sort of the pre and post pandemic. And this particular study illustrated um that Lexia had the ability to prevent learning's loss during the pandemic itself. Um, and it also illustrated how all students, how we are effective with all students. And you can see that with the first bubble, which is the students, they compared a control and an, and twenty-five schools that were using Core Five and fifty-four percent of those students using Core Five in comparison to schools that were not, outperformed. And particularly in the third grade, why they called that out was because those students were significantly below a, as a result of the pandemic. So their normal pre-pandemic norms, they were significantly below and they were able to make signi- like significant progress. As you heard here, we're seeing two grades, right? One, two grades of growth so we can get our students back to where our post-pandemic norms were, even above. So that's why I thought, I called that one out. And also RAND study, uh, if you're familiar with RAND, it's a nonprofit and it's an outside firm to help make evaluations, so it's, it's impartial. Um, I called out here before that Lexia, you know, is adding to the body of research. So as an organization, we are actually contributing to the body of research around the science of reading. Um, and you see here, this is, we heard a lot about, we heard about what is Lexia? This is a visual of how we address reading across the strands, across the grades. So you can visualize a student moving in a systematic, comprehensive way through this scope and sequence. And I was also very relevant to call out the work by Piasta. Piasta has, research illustrates that teacher knowledge and practice, as we heard right here today, has a statistical impact on students and their ability to learn or read. So as an organization, we see the teacher as the center of this process. And with the work that's happening here in the state of New Hampshire, we know that, that there were folks that were educators, part of Nashua, that engaged in the letter train, the letters training. And just, this is the interaction point that I'm calling out as we learn the what, why, and the how of literacy instruction and the materials together are really where we see the most. We can see the greatest benefit to our students. This is another visual. We know about Scarborough's rope. Uh, it illustrates language comprehension and word recognition. Really, I think this is powerful because it's the weaving of those two things together that is what is learning to read and reading to learn. And then I overlay that with the letters work. So here we are, we talk about adaptive blended learning. What's so, I was gonna say cool, but it is cool because it's amazing that we can meet students exactly where they are so that they can accelerate. So that's what's happening. We're pinpointing where they are in their development of reading and then we're working with them to move. And, and if they accelerate, you saw that student is now working in fifth grade material. So they can move at their pace. And as a way to address and target, we have offline resources and of course, the work that you're doing in the classroom itself with your core curriculum, with the writing stories that you shared as a way to together um move through that scope and sequence. So the idea is acceleration and really flipping the model and moving exactly where the students are as a way to do that and pinpointing if they have a struggle. I like this visual because I think MTSS is really critical. And when we think about programs like Core Five, um, this is really about the intensity of instruction. We know that all students need best practice, but that intensity might differ. And that's the intent, that's the intention behind the adaptive blended learning. Some students might need more time on the program or more, might more time learning a particular concept. So we know that intensity or that approach might be a bit different depending on the student's need. I think this is also very relevant. We are patented with, which means that we offer assessment data without a testing experience. We know stopping to test can take time out of instruction. There is, this data doesn't require a testing experience. So what we are doing is providing real-time information, very granular, around where the student is in terms of their knowledge across that scope and sequence. And then we have a very strong research team that helps us see correlation and validity to benchmark and high-stakes assessments. So this is, ooh, how did that help? Oh, oh, it's very subtle. I'll point this for David here. Oh, yeah, so we could pause here before we get into um the, the data, what we were planning to share.
I just, um, I'm just wondering, I mean, these, this data is pretty amazing and, and a lot of times, um, this kind of information doesn't get shared. Are we gonna have some kind of, and this is mostly for you, Dr. Sarfati, are we gonna have some kind of um report out at near the end of the school year of the, the successes that we've had with the various um programs?
Absolutely. I mean, obviously, that's one of the points of, that's one of the points of today's meeting, but I would love to continue to share. And that's really kind of what these meetings have been about, as I think you've noticed this year. We've really dug into the work and now we're seeing great results. And so, absolutely. And what I will say is, and I'm sure that they're gonna get into it, but David is the person who has been going around to all the schools and really helping the schools dig into the data. And I'm sure that he would love to give an end-of-year report.
That's actually this part of the perfect timing for that question because we did prepare some data for today for us to look at. I think it's really awesome that you called. I think it's really awesome that you called out that we are in March and we still have some solid work that we can do of the remaining part of the year. But here's where we are today that David's going to walk us through.
And I think you've heard a lot of reference to this kind of data where students are starting in grade level or below grade level. And as you're looking at the chart on the right side, this now gives you a visual for what our esteemed educators were speaking of. You know, starting with that twenty two percent at the beginning of the school year, this is district wide. That twenty two percent of students who are working on grade level material has now exploded up into thirty four percent. Thirty four percent, and that's up, that's only through February. So that's ultimately just over half the year. That progress continues to be made, school by school, child by child. And I think one of the things that was really exciting to hear was that the teachers are looking and reacting to the data. So the program itself is fantastic. The data that they get is only as powerful as the people who look at them. And, you know, I've been so impressed with the teachers here in Nashua. And when we talk about meeting usage, we have a recommended amount of time and a recommended amount of efficiency in the program in order to advance to that next level. So the contrast of the previous slide, that was all students. This is showing the students who have met our recommendations for how much time should be spent interacting with the program. Because these students, and there were so many of them, four hundred and fifty three of those students, seventy two percent have now advanced at least one grade level worth of material, whether they started way behind or just a little behind. Again, that usage all the way through February. I love this graph because this is an analysis of looking at specifically those group of students who did start below grade level. In this reporting sample of three thousand ninety seven students, one thousand two hundred eighty five of those students have advanced at least one grade level of material, which is so astounding to see. And I love that we actually have one of the teachers here who had a student, one of your students, who started three grade levels below. And, you know, we referenced how he has already made that progress. And they make that progress because they love doing the program. Kids will not invest time in things they don't love to do. And I think this is a great reminder of that, that students are really our ultimate consumers, as well as the data with the teachers as well. I wanted to put up some metrics for the different schools that I've been working with. And I, you know, thank Nashua for giving me the opportunity to meet with all these educators and with these leaders that have done a tremendous job. I do want to point out, you know, if you look at the three, four, fifth column there, let me look at the average minutes of use. And then the last column, look in the average units per week. So an average unit should take about five minutes to complete. We've spent a lot of time this year looking at not only the amount of time students are on, we want to make sure that they were making the best use of that time. So a great deal of our professional learning has been, how do we look at that data and understand that we not only want to have students on the program, but we want them to be highly successful? And what are the elements that help them to be successful? Supporting them when they need it, giving that on the spot help when that student needs it, celebrating successes, letting the kids know that the data and what they're doing on the program matters. And then lastly, I, and this is huge, I just wanted to shout out the amount of intellectual commitment and time commitment that teachers have made to this program over the last couple of years. Over two hundred and seventy five teachers have participated in professional learning sessions, thirty eight hours of professional learning just this year. A hundred and sixty of your educators are checking MyLexia, which is the teacher platform to look at the data on an average of three and a half times per week. With the amount of things that teachers have access to and the amount of resources they have access to, for them to be actively checking that data three or four times a week speaks to the immense magnitude and ability of the teachers in this district. So thank you so much for that time commitment. I'll let you represent all the teachers and, you know, great job.
So how were the students performing that are on grade level? I didn't hear anything about that. The ones that came into the school year on grade level, how are they performing and how are they increasing?
Yeah, we can go back to that first slide. And I'm glad that you pointed that out because this program really is for all students of all ability levels, which really helps them to accelerate. So even students who are working at grade level are continuing to move through the program. The program will go pre K all the way to grade five. So if you have a second grader who is working in second grade material, they can keep going past that as well. So if you look at the light blue, that thirty percent, these are for students who are meeting usage. They've now increased that group of students working on grade level to forty eight percent of those students. So that's that light blue that you're seeing there. That's on grade level. So that's what I'm excited about is every student, and I think one of you alluded to this, every student, no matter what level they're at, is excited and feels successful. And I think that's amazing.
Exactly where they are. So the dark blue is above grade level. So that, that is growing. And so that would, that would, it could align to your, your high stakes assessments in, in, in New Hampshire as well. So thinking about above proficiency, the medium blue is at grade level, and then the light in the dark represents below and more than really recognizing that there is a spectrum of learning needs out there.
But to concretely, and I think Sandy's going to say that probably the same thing. So just to make sure that, just make sure that there's like a common understanding. So thirty percent of the students in our district will, out of that four hundred and fifty three students, started off on grade level. And now twenty percent of those students are above grade level. So they are being exposed to more rigorous and challenging texts and, and tasks. And they're working above their grade level. I hope that answers your question. Do you want to?
You know, I would also add, you know, as a former enrichment teacher myself, that it was, it's very important that students who are at grade level or above are still challenged. And so we have support materials of skill builders that help them practice the skills that they learn. We have Lexia connections, which are activities that they can do to interact with others to go wide as well as, as advancing in the program as well.
Sorry. No, no. Oh, I'm so sorry, Sandy.
Thank you. Sorry. I'm just making sure that I'm hearing your question and trying to address what I think might be a little bit more detail. So when a child places into the grade level, there are multiple levels within that grade level that they have to achieve. So it's cumulative. So it's not like they're placed in that grade level and that's, it's stagnant. Does that make sense? So I'm, I can't remember how many levels, ten per grade level-ish? Wait. Sorry. Three or four levels per, there are, how many levels in total?
Twenty one.
Thank you. I'm trying to remember all of those details. There's a lot in the brain right now. So I think knowing where a child comes in and is placed could be at the very beginning of that grade level, could be in the middle, or it could be at the end. Does that help a little bit clarify your question?
Yes, I just was wondering when kids come in, are they tested to this curriculum? Are they tested from the two thousand twenty two numbers that you had before talked about?
So what the students will do is they'll take what's called an auto placement, which takes about fifteen minutes for the program to just get a quick idea of where they might be starting. It will start at grade level, but then adjust as a student goes through. And then once they're placed, they, they advance from there.
And then based on how they perform on the auto placement, they have a profile, whether they're an at risk profile or an on grade level profile. So our recommended, recommended usage is really based on that profile. So students that are performing at or above have less time recommendation. So we, it actually is customized based on the student profile. And just as a standard, how many hours per week should they be doing dyslexia program?
If they're on grade level, it's twenty minutes per week. If they are behind grade levels, it can be up to eighty minutes, but that's per week.
And then to Dr. Sarfati, and after that twenty minutes, if they're on grade level, what other curriculum are we using to support that class time for the rest of the week? Because?
So, so, so we have our core instruction, the tier one instruction. And then this would be, this would be an added supplemental support. So for some students, it would be intervention. And for some students, it would be enrichment. But I just want to make sure that we paint a comprehensive picture. So this isn't just about kids being on the computer. When the teachers are logging in, I think you said an average of three and a half times per week, they're able to go in and look at individual students to see either where they can be challenged. And they're given lessons, specific lessons and ideas to, to help to intervene, to accelerate them. So that would happen during the win time, it would happen during ELA lab time, and/or when it comes to provided targeted intervention. Teachers would use the Lexia data, but they would also use, I mean, they try to triangulate so they can isolate where the gaps are. And then, and then deliver targeted instruction. I don't know what I was gonna say. Oh, you know, the other thing that I think you asked, and I just want to make sure that I address it is, I think you were asking like what constitutes on grade level? Is that what you were asking? Like, how do we determine what, because this isn't a curriculum. This is, this is, these are, I guess, activities, if you will, that are aligned to the pillars of reading that we know make up like the whole process of reading. And the texts that are chosen are grade level texts and/or sometimes they are lower than grade level texts, depending on what students are able to access. But what constitutes grade level proficiency would be like our national standard, like the Common Core State Standards. So we have a set of standards for every grade level. And when students are able to demonstrate mastery or proficiency of those individual standards, then we can say that they are proficient. But kind of like what Sandy was saying, grade level proficiency really has multiple layers. And there's like a certain depth of, you know, I can be a really proficient swimmer, but then I can become an expert swimmer, right? And then I move on to sort of diving or whatever it is. That was a terrible analogy, but sometimes I try.
So I guess that goes to my next question. So as for this not being a curriculum, this being an assessment tool to help with different learning styles, dyslexia, special education, ELL, how is that being carried out, outside of that twenty minutes and then into that core curriculum that you're saying per class?
So it's, it's not an assessment, it's not used as an assessment tool. It's used as a supplemental support. I just want to be careful. And then through their performance, we're able to generate, not necessarily assessment data, but performance data, right? And so what, I mean, I think what these guys were saying is kids, so kids start to build proficiency in a certain skill area, let's say. And then they're able to, to demonstrate proficiency on the computer. But the teachers also use the data to design specialized instruction for students to either intervene and/or accelerate. And then the goal would always be for them to then go ahead and apply those skills in math, science, ELA, whenever. But this does not take place during our core block, if that's what you're asking. Yeah, so we have two blocks where this would take place. ELA lab or the win time, when is what I need. That's when it would never take place during core instruction. That would be contrary to the research and we don't want to do that.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it and we'll be around.
We're just going to have a little transition time. Thank you so much. Okay, so now we're going to hear from Mr. Poska and from Carrie Burns about middle school LA, ELA updates.
Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for, for giving us the opportunity to talk about some middle school ELA updates. I think the other night at one of the board meetings, you heard Ms. Burns, who is the middle school ELA instructional coach and some of her colleagues, talk about some of the, the work they've been doing over the last year and a half. That year and a half worth of work has led up to this point now where we have to make some adjustments with our, kind of our scope and sequence and, and what we're doing on our daily basis in our classrooms. Since the beginning, summer of twenty twenty two, we've been able to partner with TLA, which is a teaching learning alliance. They've come in and been working with our staff, really on best practices and in helping develop our pedagogy within our classrooms. Because of that connection, the relationships, it's been, some trust has been formed. Ms. Burns has done a great job cultivating and facilitating that relationship with TLA, which has led into some of the curriculum work updates that we're going to talk a little bit about right now. So Carrie and I might tag team a little bit, but I'm gonna ping pong it over to her right now to talk a little bit about the next steps and what she's done.
Hello. Yeah, so in, in twenty twenty two, in the summer, we started some work with TLA, which was wonderful. We had a really large team that summer. And it was before Mr. Poska was in his current role. And we were spending a lot of time definitely working on pedagogy with TLA at that point, but we also started looking at some different curriculum unit resources that we could try. But the focus, a lot of the focus with the partnership with TLA in that first year was really in some job embedded coaching. We had some visitations of different schools, which was great. We had different teachers that had been working with TLA, got to visit teachers over at Penachalk or at Fairgrounds or at Elm, that they don't typically get to go into the classroom and see each other in action. And so those inter visitations were spectacular. The teachers really loved that job embedded coaching and those visitations last year. And then we also had some workshops with TLA after school that everybody could attend if they had wanted. And so that's kind of how our partnership started. And then throughout the twenty two, twenty three school year, we did work on, also on building some units and reflecting on some of the units that we tried. And we also started work with ELA steering. That started with the course recommendations that we talked about last week at the BOE meeting. And then during last summer, we started to try to draft a scope and sequence of what we would like to be teaching and when, looking at standards, looking at different materials and books that we wanted to use. We have several different resources that we've been taking a look at, including, oh, there's a Hutton Mifflin one, MyPerspectives, CKLA is in there. We've been looking at a lot of those different materials to figure out if, if something would be a good fit for us, if you want to lean on some of those. There are also a lot of open resources that don't cost anything, that we've already leaned on quite a bit. So Expeditionary Learning is one that we kind of have adapted a couple of the units that, that they have created. And there's a lot of open resources that we're also leaning on, things like Common Lit and UZLA has different resources we've been using as well. So we've been trying to utilize a lot of resources in our plan.
One of the things that Ms. Burns mentioned previously is, is kind of the the classroom visits, you know, Penachalk going to Fairgrounds, Fairgrounds going to Elm, et cetera. And I think the, starting to kind of tear down some of those silos was an important step for us for this work. Because I think we, the teachers got to recognize, there's a lot of good things going on across the district and how we can share and learn from one another and try to promote some consistency. I think that's another word you heard a little bit about the other day is we want to increase the amount of consistency we have with implementation of our standards. And this gave us kind of the, the foundation to start talking about the, the increase in that consistency and helping, having TLA help us with these next steps.
So this, I guess, starting in December, I think, November, December, we started planning with TLA again to kind of shift gears just a little, because like I said, we had been working on some unit building with TLA. But that was going to become our focus for our, our next partnership, well, our continued partnership with them was to create this curriculum project. So we have been working on planning Um, so we have been working on planning out um what our curriculum will look like and refine our scope and sequence. We've just started this work. Tomorrow will be the third full day that we'll be working. Um, and we um are, I think we have nine scheduled days. So we have six more after tomorrow. Um, and right now we're working on our units for trimester one. Um, which are building off of things we worked on over the last year and a half, which is great. Um, getting some new um materials and new books into kids' hands. We we tend in middle school to to like the books that we have always taught with. And um I think that we're all finding that we're really enjoying um new books. And the kids are really enjoying um the newer literature that we're choosing. Um, the eighth grade novel, for example, is um titled Summer of the Mari Posis, which. We have an awful lot of Spanish speaking students that can see themselves in that book. Um, and probably have not had that opportunity before. It's actually a wonderful um experience. Because there's a ton of Spanish language in the book um with uh context clues throughout. You do not, there's a glossary in the back, but you don't need it. And so it's a nice role reversal for our English speaking students to have to use those context clues. So. Um, really trying to be um diverse in the choices that we're making with the books that we're using as well. Did I have another slide or was that it?
That was it.
All right.
Dr. Safdie told us to keep it to five to seven minutes and I was gonna keep it to five to seven minutes.
Really did. Um, I I just wanted to call out too that everything that Carrie is talking about and that Mr. Poska is talking about. I know because I've been working with TLA since for a long time. Everything that, all of the practices and the the resources and the lesson planning, all of that is tied to not only grade level standards. But also to this body of research that we're calling the Science of Reading. So this isn't separate. It's not something different. This is really just a continuation of the work.
We thought this was a good opportunity based upon uh the information that we had shared over the board meeting the other day to follow up to say. This is the continuation is, you know, I think, as you heard Ms. Burns and some of her colleagues from the ELA steering committee talk about the other day. There's a lot of work ahead of us. Uh, you know, our goal is we we identified nine dates. We're hoping to have, um, you know. Again, we're not starting from scratch because there's a lot of work in place. It's a matter of how we're organizing some of the work that's already in place and where does that go? And and there there's some challenging conversations, just like, you know, you know, my wife and I are doing some spring cleaning. There's some tough decisions to be made about what we're keeping and what we're not keeping right now. And a lot of the similar ideas are with this curriculum work because a lot of people have put a lot of time and effort into these activities, into these units and trying to figure out where they fit right now. So. Uh, it's good work. We'll, uh, you know, at the end of the, we're fortunate to have Carrie help facilitate that with TLA. Uh, we'll we'll reassess where we're at after these nine dates and we, there's a possibility. We're certainly looking to continue our partnership with TLA because it's been a positive partnership going forward. Um, but we're hoping to have a lot of this, um, you know, a lot of the curriculum work in place to start in the next year. And that's why we're, you know, at least I have the, you know, trimester one, trimester two in place, and then we'll go from there. But what our possible next steps could be if we need to do some additional hours over the summer, the beginning of next year. Still you.
So um are those dates that you have upcoming um all before the end of the school year?
Yes, yeah.
So and you you alluded to um kind of being on the cusp of having trimester one together or almost.
We're we're in it.
Um, and and I I like hearing the promoting consistency because that is something that we've been striving for with the middle schools for a long time. So it's good.
Thank you.
It's a lot of work. I I feel like these guys are being really humble. It's a lot of work, a lot of work. I I did this work with TLA and I remember I was one of the people who pushed back the most. I. I know that there's a lot of personalities. Like Carrie said, people are very protective of what they've always done. Um, but I think it's more than. Like you're being so humble, Carrie. Can you can brag a little bit? I think it's more than just like the curriculum planning and scope. It's really about shifting mindset. And it's about, in a lot of cases, of transformation of instructional practices.
It it really is. I mean, where, so the the units that we're planning, so like the eighth grade unit with the Summer of the Mari Posis. It's it's a whole class novel, which middle school teachers are used to doing whole class novels. But we also don't want it to just be that one novel for an entire trimester. So we're looking at kind of condensing things. What what is it? What are our big ideas? What are our essential understandings? And what's what standards are we really focusing on in this particular unit? So that we can move through that unit. Um, and then we want to look at building um units utilizing book clubs. Um, our eighth grade at Penachalk had an um excellent experience with book clubs last year. Um, working with TLA um during their um Holocaust unit. Um, so instead of reading Anne Frank, as has been read in eighth grade for forever. Um, the teachers there um with TLA designed a book club unit where there were, I think, six different titles. All having to do the Holocaust that were being read. So we're we're looking at trying to um create those opportunities. For kids to have a lot of different experiences with reading. So it it has been, it has been a lot of work. And I actually was thinking as we were sitting here that it's 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 been a lot of work. And we s- we do still have a long way to go, but we've done a lot of great work up to this point too, especially with shifting mindsets, um which is great. And that takes time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity.
I just, can I add one more thing? So Matt and I will be meeting. We know approximately what our, I mean, kind of ballpark. We hope what our Title II Professional Development Funds will look like next year. So I think our goal is to make sure that we have a plan in place. So that when we were, when we are notified that our funds are available to us, hopefully like the first week of July. We can just put the activities in. These guys can plan out the year. Um, but I think that's probably one of the purposes of you being here, right? To expand the part- partnership and continue it.
Thank you, Dr. Safdie. I think we we have done a lot of good work with TLA uh up to this point. We need to continue this work. Um, I think to Dr. Sarfey's point, uh, when when July comes, where there's many professional development opportunities. We want to make sure are in place so we can continue the the positive momentum that we started K to twelve with a lot of our professional development. So it has to continue and we're excited about that opportunity.
I just, I just had a couple of questions. Um, so going back to this curriculum planning. You know, we said that we were changing um down to the different schedules that we were taking away. Um. One of the core classes, we were getting rid of the literacy. But we just had, we just talked about keeping the literacy in the younger levels and how important it was. So I know that there's a standard, um, we're going back to go forward.
No, I'm sorry. No, uh, so we would never. I and I think we saw this last week. We would never have this because I, correct me if I'm wrong. But I I believe my understanding of the literacy class at the middle school was that's when kids were exposed to complex text, right? Is that?
It was a focus on informational text.
Okay, right. So that would, that's not a thing. It's not aligned to any research. It's not aligned to any any standards. There there should be an equal mix of informational and and um fiction texts. And and all of the activities that go together. We never separate reading and writing, nor should we ever do that. So I I'm I'm, I, that's not what we said today. So I'm, I guess I just want to hear where the disconnect is because.
So I was just talking about the focus on literature, on literacy. You know, how we're losing the literacy teachers and then. But going back to come forward, like you're saying that these are things that should have happened a long time ago. That these are old things, that these are things that should not um, that we should have done a long time ago. And that that's my question. As you're going forward on the next nine days to do this. How how much of it is actually going back? Or how much of it is actually going towards these new things that we've talked about today? And the CLK, CLK, CKL curriculum that's going forward?
I think it's a a matter of of our staff going back and unpacking what we currently have in place. And making sure we're aligning it all to our ELA standards. As I, as I referred to before, we have a lot of things in place, but it's a little inconsistency, inconsistent how we're doing it. You know, classroom to classroom. This allows us to promote that consistency across all grade levels, across all all the classrooms. And I think that's kind of a little bit what you heard last week of, there was a lot of grit and tensions there and everyone was doing it a little bit differently. This allows us to focus that consistency, old pick on middle school, six to eight. About what our ELA standards are and what the implementation of those standards is going to be across all the grade levels and across all the schools.
I I think sometimes that it's it's because that seventh grade class is called literacy. And we're saying we're not having that particular course anymore. But literacy is a part of everything that we do. And so that that was one course that that was created and designed in. And the standards and the research show us that we need to integrate all of informational tax, literature, writing. All of it should be integrated. Um, and that's not what we were doing. So we're not, so it's. That that course is called literacy, but we're not getting rid of literacy. Literacy is a part of all things.
Yeah, right. Literacy is everywhere. I mean, just thinking about how we use literacy every day. I mean, uh, last Monday, I think we had that presentation by the dental hygienist who was talking about uh getting um grants. To be able to continue dental health in our elementary schools. So she and I have been working to find a grant. So literacy is me looking through the RFP, reading through, what does the grant proposal have to incorporate? Now I am pulling all kinds of informational texts so that I can extract information and include research into. Because I'm gonna write, we're gonna collaboratively write a new uh grant proposal. But I have to take a bunch of information that I learned from many different texts, synthesize the information and basically formulate an argument. Like this is what we do every single day. Formulate an argument and then support the argument with information that I extract. But additionally, I mean, I'm also looking at anecdotal stuff, like real life stories about how having a program like that has impacted our students positively. And then weaving it all together into this, you know, uh, grant proposal where hopefully we can secure hundreds of thousands of dollars. I I I agree with you, Carrie, that word literacy is so. It really is like jarring to people because people think we're getting rid of, we're not. Actually, what we're trying to do is we're really looking at the fact that we're not cultivating. Literate, fully literate students in our district and we haven't been for a long time. The vast majority of our kids are not proficiently reading, not even close. And so we're trying to rectify that. And we have been slowly, but we we just have a lot more work to do. Um, but yes, I, we have to go back. The standards came out in two thousand nine. I think everybody interpreted them interpreted them differently. But now there's like a revolution going on. There's no denying what the research says. And the research does tie back to the standards. And so we're just gonna put it all together, write neatly, package with the bull. And hopefully we'll start doing a lot better.
Absolutely. Um. That's that's what I was understanding, is that we're losing that whole class. We're splitting it out in by minutes into the other classes. And um, can you speak more to this revolution that of the education?
Yeah, I mean, so the revolution is the fact that for decades, we were teaching students. The strategies in the, at the elementary level that children who cannot read employ. We were, so even, I I was looking at our um kindergarten screening information and our retention forms in our district. We, one of the pieces of criteria that we had on our retention form, so think about, think about what a huge decision that is. We're, we have conversations about, do we want to hold kids back a year or do we want to have them move forward? And we have forms that are filled with such misinformation that one of the skills they have to master. Is using images to be able to make sense of text. That's insane. That's crazy. You know why? Because an image does not equate to reading. What we want to do is cover all the images and see if kids can actually read. But that is just one example of a practice that was just grounded in disproven research, disproven theory. And that has resulted in basically, you know, three quarters of our country of of the kids. Who have been coming out of these classrooms, not being able to read profesh- uh proficiently rather. And when we look at our district level, um, performance data, one of the first things I did when Jonathan Doster came here. Is we started to tease out all of our demographic group groups. And so what we found is that the performance was, uh, there was a a a great discrepancy. In performance data when it came specifically to some of our, well, to all of our marginalized populations. I would be able to look at a list of students and look at all of their demographic information. And make predictions about how they would perform. And that's not okay. That's the antithesis of what we want to do. We want to le- level the playing field. So no matter what your native language is, no matter what, you know, what people are speaking at home, at home. In terms of a, in terms of a language, no matter if you are coming from one of the wealthiest families. Or one of the families that is struggling the most, whether you're a person of color, the left, the playing field should be level. We should not have inequitable practices and we shouldn't have inequitable opportunities. Because, you know, if I'm a kid who's coming from a highly educated household. And there is definitely a correlation in our country between those parents who are highly educated and what their income level is. I do know some PhDs who are poor, so that's not always true. But for the most part, people who have the most education are making most money. And then what also happens is kids from those families are hearing very sophisticated language. That's not new to them when they encounter it in text, when they encounter it in school. They get to go to the Museum of Science. They maybe get to go to Disney World. They maybe get to go to New York City and learn about all kinds of things. Whereas other kids don't have those opportunities. So they automatically start school. I mean, it's, there's the research, right? The thirty million word gap, Gisly? Yeah. Like, so the 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 research tells us that kids from highly educated households come to school knowing significantly more words. And and know significantly more about the world than kids who come from low income families. And so this is how they're starting off. We don't want that to happen. We want this to happen so that. I can look at, I can look at the data in our district. I can look at all the demographic information, race. Um, native, like native language, uh, English language proficiency. I can look at um whether or not the students qualify for free and reduced lunch. And I don't see a massive discrepancy. That's, we don't want that. I mean, obviously, nobody wants that to happen. And so the revolution is really about, okay. Before, only some kids were afforded the opportunity to be able to read and write. And now we know the research. There's no excuse to not align practices and resource, resources to the research. And then what we want to do is level the playing field. And people are calling it out. People are saying, I mean, it's, the data is everywhere. I mean, the data that we see nationally is the same data that we could see in any school district around the country. You literally can look at a list of kids and look at their demographic information and pick who is gonna be a proficient reader. And that is insane. So I guess that's, that's the revolution.
That was a fastball for you. He caught that one. Any other questions for us?
I just, I just, sorry, I'm just thinking of all of my teachers right now. And I just wanted to make it very clear that that seventh grade literacy class is not the only other class that there was. There were also separate writing classes at both sixth and eighth grade levels. So I think that you're hearing a lot about the literacy class, but I want to remind you that there were other classes as well. That again, the decision was based on research, um, based on the standards. And I think that uh, as Dr. Sarfey said, when the standards first came out, they were a lot. They were a lot. I can absolutely see why we said, hey, we need to have this sixth grade writing class. And I can absolutely see why we said, wow, this, these literacy standards are everywhere. We need to have a class that is gonna support that. I I understand why we had those scaffolds in place. But n- now we have learned more and we know the standards more and and so we're changing.
Um, I was just wondering, uh, what percent of the work that's been done, the meetings. Were done after the decision was made to go to heterogeneous grouping?
All of it.
So all of the work that's been done was done after that decision was made?
Oh, the work that we've done to update the curriculum?
Yes.
Yes, that started after that decision was made. We had, there had been pockets of work going on to prom- uh, to update some of those units prior to that.
We had, there had been pockets of work going on to, uh, to update some of those units prior to that. But once the decision was made, uh, the recommendation was made to go to the heterogeneous grouping, then, you know, this was why we started late right now. I think we're, you know, that's kind of, I don't think we started till after, started planning a little bit, but we didn't really have a confirmation from TLA till about January for all this, right, Ms. Burns? So we need to get everything in, in order before we move forward.
I was just wondering if people are talking about the cost of getting materials that are transferable, adjustable?
We, we have a lot of resources available to us and that's one of some of the work that Ms. Burns is doing right now with TLA to see what we have in place and our current resources and how we can utilize those. We don't have, you know, we're, we're really relying on what the standards are. We're, we're not going to a, some type of box curriculum at this time. So we're really relying on the standards and the units that we have in place and where do they fit in, what do they look like? And they are going to be, I think that's kind of some of the, the, the looks on, and Ms. Burns faces that sometimes this work is hard and sometimes the, it fits in very well, sometimes it doesn't fit in as well. And that's where we have to have those conversations about what is it we need to support some of these units in, in addition to what we currently have.
I was just wondering, I just had one last related question. And when you talked about, cause I, I know what it's, what it's like with the personalities too. Cause at one point they had the high school head teachers try to go down to the middle schools and meet with them and try to scaffold what was being done in seventh grade with what we were doing at the high school. So I was just wondering, um, what the mood, the mood is at, at these sessions, given the changes that teachers are facing this year?
Um, I, I would say we feel the time crunch right now and, and, um, that would, that would be the only thing that I think that I would consider maybe a negative at this point. But the, the team, there's a team of, um, ten Nashua teachers and, and one representative from TLA that are working together on this. And the, in the, it is a pretty positive feel in the room. It's just, we feel the pressure of the time. And, and we are also thinking vertically. I have met a couple of times, um, here at North with reading specialists and I had ELA teacher and one of the administrators. Um, and we are trying to have good conversations about rigor and, and moving kids forward. Um, so those, those kind of conversations, we're starting them.
I also had one more question. Considering the change, only considering the change to the curriculum planning of the middle schools, what's the cost increase to the district?
As of right now, there is none. We, we, the consultant, we've, you know, we're utilizing the consultant through a grant. We've been able to purchase, uh, you know, Ms., um, uh, Burns did a great job of, of, of working and getting some feedback from the staff so we could get additional, um, novels already. So we just, not just tied to one novel, so we have a variety of those things. So right now, not a big number attached to it. You know, I think going forward, as we try to revise and update some of that, some of those activities, we might have to talk a little bit about that, but right now, we're pretty good.
Yeah, I just wanted to add one last thing. So when this originally started, like when people started to get a dabble in it, it was right before we started, right? So I think.
It's the summer of 2022.
Okay, like July or something. So I, I will say, and I'm sure that Meredith from TLA can attest to this. There was, there was a pretty significant group of teachers who signed up. Not everybody was excited. And she had a lot of work to do. Um, but, but there were teachers who did pilot, um, different units. Not necessarily like a curriculum, but look, just looking at, here's what an aligned, grade level aligned unit looks like. Here's a grade level aligned text versus like what you've been doing. Just try it. And so there weren't like pockets of teachers who, who started that work. And I would say the fact that it's continuing in 2024 means, sorry, making noises, means that, you know, those people, even though maybe they weren't thrilled at first, they had some positive experiences. So what we see is just like, this is change management, right? Like then they start to tell their friends and then their friends try it and then they hop on board and then Carrie puts in a big order for all these books and then they try another unit and that's kind of, I think, what we're seeing.
I think that's a great example because I think the work that started in, you know, the summer of 22, if we didn't have those growing pains, we wouldn't be here right now with TLA. So it's been a positive experience for everyone.
And I was just, so when you came up, were there any conversations with, um, the teachers who helped create the freshman writing course? It seems like yesterday, but I think that was six years ago.
Not yet.
But that's not leveled, but I would think that's if any of those teachers are around who were involved in creating, because that's not leveled, right? Creating that, they might have some insights.
No, we haven't, we haven't talked about that yet.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Have a good afternoon.
Okay, so, um, I was actually going to have tutor.com come to, or come to talk to us tonight about the services that they've been offering to kids across the district. However, um, we had some transportation issues, so we're going to table that and they will be joining us in April. And then the other two items are just, they're just informational. Um, I wanted to just make sure that I highlighted some of the awesome work that is happening. So, um, at Bicentennial, the, the students, I guess, like as an extension of what they are learning and during their ELA block, um, they had a virtual visit from a food chemist, which is kind of amazing. Um, and then additionally over at, wow, I think this was Penachuk, the second, oh, yeah, it is. Penachuk, um, what we saw there was that a NASA scientist visited Penachuk as well. And I believe that the classroom teachers in both of these classrooms collaborated with Monica Tino and Patty Davidson to make this happen. And these are just two cool experiences that I just wanted to highlight. That's it?
That's it?
That's it.
Hey, I guess we're going to need a motion.
Make motion that we adjourn.
Second that motion?
And we are adjourned at about 5:40. Well done.